And we will just turn it directly over to Mr. Russ.
Okay, I distributed a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that hopefully will be coming up on the screen. On the screen shortly, but I can talk about the second slide, just a quick overview of the PowerPoint presentation. So you have a kind of understanding where we want to get to tonight. Once we get into the presentation, we will be looking at 2022 general fund revenue and its projections. And then I'll be looking at the 2022 general fund expenditure projections. And looking at where we're going to be from now to the end of the year. I'll give you a review of the position of the general fund fund balance. I'll give you an overview of the historical revenue trends, including shared revenue, tax levies and other revenues. Those three categories, we kind of lump them into those three buckets. We'll spend some time talking about a tax levy and valuation history as well as some of the rate trends going forward. I'll turn it over to Michelle to talk about some wage and benefit projections. I'll come back and talk about some debt projections and capacity. There we go. And then we'll talk about some levy needs and just on a preliminary standpoint where we're looking at and actually have some discussion of what you might want to provide as input for the levy going forward. So it's somewhat similar to the format I used in the last couple of years. I think it has worked well. Some of the slides have changed and some of the methodology that we've used in the past has changed. But if I jump ahead and start with, if everybody's okay, general fund revenues on page two of your handout. Again, I went two slides a page, still kind of small reading, but hopefully you can follow along. And you could, there's still enough room to make some notes. But overall, if you look at our budget for revenue, that's a third column down. We call it revised budget because we have budget adjustments during the year. So it's not necessarily the original budget, but where we're at right now. And if you go all the way down to the bottom, right down here, forty-nine million, seven hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred. This is our actual July to date numbers and our project is, projection is fifty million, two sixty-seven, six hundred. So we're slightly above our projections on revenue as we see things coming up. So when I did projections this year, we used our accounting software, that Munis program that we've talked about in the past. Previously, we had used a more sophisticated projection model and we did not use that this year. We, we ended that subscription. So I had to go back in and fine tune some of these projections and that's caused some, some changes along the way. But I just wanted to let you know in looking at things, things are coming pretty much in as budgeted as far as the revenue is concerned. So that's the main story.
Can you explain the internal service charges? That's one of the areas.
Yeah, that's basically when, when we do charges from one department to another. You'll see that probably a little bit more in the 2023 budget projections. We have started an internal service fund to account for our vehicle maintenance. And prior, we just account for materials and supplies and time, not time, but just materials and supplies. We're now going to start accounting for time, for employee time. And so that's not a payroll cost in the general fund. It's actually an interdepartmental charge. Does that make sense?
It does.
And we're trying to do, some of these things are, you know, associated with trying to make sure we stay in compliance with expenditure restraint, things like that. So we just, we just do those things. But this right now is mostly utility stuff.
Good question. So that's, that's just a numbers look at, at things. I don't know if this makes a whole lot of sense, but the gold or yellow numbers are, they should be revised budget. I got, I got truncated when I did the graph, but the yellow is the budget and the twenty-two is the projection. And like I said, it's pretty close. I mean, there's not any real significant difference. I do have a couple of notes on that. Overall, it's like a difference, we're over budget by about a half a million dollars, five hundred and fifteen thousand, one percent. That's why I said it's not real significant. So it's a one percent change from our budget. Other financing sources are about two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars over budget. That's primarily due to our other financing sources include interest on special assessments. And that's coming in a little bit higher than projected. License and permits are slightly under about sixteen hundred bucks. Fines and forfeitures are running a little bit light, so I'm not too concerned because I think there might be some variations coming in the next coming months that I'm not seeing in the projection. So I'm not concerned that that's worrisome. We're going to be over a little bit of miscellaneous revenue. You had mentioned internal service funds, that's a pretty significant overage. And just a slight decrease in the anticipated revenue from the sale of fixed assets. So that's just kind of a brief overview on the revenue side of things.
And this is kind of more of a macro review of it, using the modeling and then tweaking the modeling as opposed to the departments taking a look at things. But, you know, when most of your revenue is property tax and shared revenue, it makes it, those are pretty reliable revenue sources. So having small variance at this time of year isn't that unusual.
So, so then we go from revenue to expenditures. And this is one of the things that I thought we might be getting you an updated printed copy of just this slide. So these numbers are different than this, than this, than what you're looking at on paper. This is the most up to date numbers that we had. We had some issues in some of the categories, but really if you're looking at it on the expenditure side, we're looking and projecting at forty-nine million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And we're going to, we have a budget of forty-nine, forty-nine million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand. It looks like my additional copies just came. So we, we have the handouts for you with that revision in it, so you can add that to the packet. But we, basically we, we had a slight modification in the revised budget and projected amounts in, in the numbers that you have before you. Thanks, Jennifer.
Thanks for being here at the last minute. If there wasn't last minute, there'd be no time.
Oh, my gosh, that's just the way we roll, man.
Yeah, yeah, the chart, like two columns flipped, I see as well, so.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
It's come to the two hundred thousand, so that's what I was happy about.
So if you want to look at a graph picture again, this first graph shows by organizational type area. So general government, public safety, public works, transportation, culture, recreation, conservation and development and unclassified. So if you're looking at it, it's a breakdown that way. In this next slide, we go by category. And the telling thing on this one is our projected actual on payroll benefits is what we anticipated, but slightly ahead of what we budgeted. We, we went to self insurance in 2022. We did projections in the budget that are slightly different than what actually is occurring. We may have to come back to counsel for a budget adjustment on that. And contractual services are running a little bit higher than anticipated. But overall, I think things are looking pretty good on the expenditure side of things.
So the, the public safety overage, that's probably due to payroll benefits.
That payroll benefits, there's some payroll costs that are slightly over too. I think a little bit on the overtime. I got some of the bullet points here. Again, the difference, we're about two hundred thousand or about less than a half percent on the total expenditures. We got salaries that are slightly over, which is paying overtime. We got benefits over and then services as well, so.
Our vacancies are, we're paying a price for vacancies.
Overtime.
Yeah, because you've got those departments that are, you know, there's, I won't say minimum staffing, but you know, there's a certain level of workforce, preferred staffing that we want at any one time. And we've also done a lot of call in for when there's, when there's vacancies. Quite honestly, this isn't really a budget issue. That's why it's great to have Michelle here for this. There's, there's a lot of folks who are burned out because they're getting ordered in for overtime. And then some people call in sick because they're just exhausted. And then it adds to even more overtime. It's a, it's a real challenge and that's why the numbers are reflecting what they are.
So we want, we, we did an overview of revenue and overview of expenditures, which leads, you know, in governmental accounting, we don't have owner's equity, we have fund balance. We all aware of that. I do have some history on fund balance, but I think the important thing to look at is our 2021 total fund balance, nineteen million, six hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars. That's a given. There are some assignments and amounts classified as unspendable. You can have reserve fund balances for a number of reasons. The assigned is things that are coming up in the future expenses that have to be paid, like bills and checks and those type of things. It also has some other accruals that are associated with that. And then we have an unspendable portion that's basically some inventory, some other things. So we truly have about seventeen million, seven hundred thirty-four thousand going into 2022. As it stands right now, with our projections going into the budget, with the revenues being over, over budget by five hundred thousand dollars and expenditures being over budget by two hundred thousand, we have a three hundred thousand dollar swing to eighteen million, zero four nine, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That is a projection of fund balance at the end of 2022, leading into 2023. Long range finance, city council has adopted a policy where our minimum fund balance is sixteen percent of the next year's expenditures to a maximum of thirty percent. So as we stand projected for the end of 2022, we would be about three million dollars over our maximum by our policy. How that gets spent is up to council. It's most appropriate to do those as one-time expenses and not operating expenses. So it's really not a budget filler, but it could be used for other projects. Yes?
Looking at your, your revised document and then compare it to your general fund slide here. Is it just me or is the math wrong? Because your projected worth of your budget is coming in two hundred thousand less for the expenses?
Over.
Over.
I think it's backwards up there when you're looking at fund balance because it's normally got a credit balance.
The number shows.
I didn't, uh, let's see, once, do you have the handout? I don't even have the handout. I didn't.
Yeah, this shows, I know what Matt's talking about.
Oh, wait a minute, hold on a second.
The new slide shows two hundred under.
Well.
There's something funky going on with that number again.
No problem. It's two hundred, I think it's two hundred thousand.
Under.
That's right when it lands.
Over?
This is showing under.
Yes, I see that.
Either way, we got a sizable chunk.
Yes.
We'll leave it there.
So again, this is just a projection, but the 2021 number is an audited number. And you'll have that audit presentation in September.
So the seventeen, seven thirty-four is solid.
Solid. And the others are estimates anyways, but that's our best view of things right now.
We're nearly three million dollars.
Correct.
Over our.
Over our maximum amount.
Which is really the.
One of the things I like to point out is this slide that looks at the fund balance since 2013. We were down around eight million dollars. Nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, we started increasing with fairly significant positive operational results during those years that which increased the fund balance. So that's kind of a brief overview of the general fund balance. Now I, I'm going to turn to some historical perspective on revenue. So this is a review of revenue for the shared revenue program. The big news is not news, but it just got to be pointed out. And that shared revenue in 2022, we are receiving more dollars in shared revenue in twenty, I mean, excuse me. In 2022, we're receiving less shared revenue than we did in 2012, which is pretty, I don't know. Not, it's not unusual, it's just disappointing. The levy went up quite a bit and there was some accounting changes before I got here that the levy jumped in 2015 to 2016. The city manager was actually encouraged me to shrink this viewpoint back behind that accounting change. I wanted to keep twenty, uh, twenty twelve and that in place as a starting point, just looking back 10 years and just acknowledging that difference.
Yeah, to make the point about shared revenue, I think that the, I mean, the real key here is, you know, you take a look at the shared revenue percentage, the second to last column. I mean, it's just been going down. It's the same spiel that I, I think I talked to council about this a little bit when we were talking about revenues in general. But that's gone from twenty-two point seven three to nineteen point three one.
And other revenues have gone down significantly. I think the major, in my review of the things, the, the major thing that happened is some of our enterprise operations like inspections and some of those other functions were taken out of the general fund and put into other special revenue or enterprise funds, so they're just not, no longer accounted in the general fund. We did some things to try to comply with the expenditure restraint program. So that's why that had changed. And you can see the percentage of shared revenue as a percent of the total going from twenty-two percent in 2012 to nineteen percent in 2022. And also a decrease in other revenues as a source.
Yeah, even if you start at 2016, you're at thirty-nine point nine one. So that's nearly forty percent and the thirty-six point oh two in 2022, it's nearly thirty percent. That four percent drop means that the percentage that we rely on the general tax levy increases. And that's, you know, the increases that the council's done is in part been due to the fact that we rely more and more on property tax to fund our, to fund our general operations. And so all this talk about expenditure restraint and levy limits, because of shared revenue primarily, we, we lean on the property tax way too much and even more, despite what is stated at the state level. The facts don't lie.
So the 2015 to sixteen, 2015 was just more the property tax going to specific funds. Was that the situation?
Yeah, we just didn't.
We didn't double our tax levy.
No, no.
Yeah.
No, that's just, it's because this isn't even our full tax levy. Even the twenty-two million, two hundred twenty-three, that's a little over half of our levy.
Do you have some of that history by chance?
Sure.
Oh, I mean, in fifteen and sixteen. If you don't, that's fine.
Why it jumped?
Yeah.
It's because of the special revenues that were pulled off because of the, like, did you find out the impact?
So we went from just general fund to just total, total levy?
It came off the general fund, it wasn't the special revenue funds.
Okay.
And that's fine, you don't need, I don't need to create a whole thing. I just want to make sure that people know that we didn't double the tax levy between fifteen and sixteen.
Yeah, and that's, and this is still a little over half of our levy because of, we, we do direct our levy to other sources, but we did something in 2015, 2016, I should be the one to remember. And I can't even remember it at this point, so I apologize for that. But yeah, our.
So this is just a linear picture of that, of those numbers. And, you know, you had that general fund, looks like a spike, but I think it was just the way we are reporting the numbers now. So I'm not too concerned, but the main point of this is how flat line is shared revenue. And if you just look at it from a 10-year perspective, you just took kind of a donut graph illustration. Again, you can see how much other revenues, shared revenue and how little property tax levy we had in 2012 compared to 2022's budget.
But I think that the real issue here is talking about shared revenue. And you can see the levy on the next slide, the total levy. And you'll see there's a minimal increase between fifteen and sixteen. And that's the, that reflects the whole, the whole levy.
I apologize because I hate doing graphs with a lot of numbers. But this is a number that'll support the next couple of graphs. It really shows the gray as the tax, the total tax levy for the city. So this is all funds included. It has the changes going back to the last 10 years. It has the valuation, the change percentages. Excuse me, it also includes the assessed rate and, and those corresponding changes. And then the green area on the right is equalized value and the changes and the increases. Again, for our budget purposes, in 2022 budget, we're using 2021's valuation numbers. So the numbers you saw on the debt chart, we talked about the growth in 2023. That's not reflected in here because that 2023 valuation numbers will be used for our 24 budget. I just, it's important to understand the concept and the timing between levy and budgets. So in 22, we had an eight percent increase in our equalized value. We know, we have the preliminary number, preliminary final number for 2023, and that's ten, another 10%. And you'll see that in our debt chart in just a little bit.
So what's really interesting with this one, and I like to do the color commentary on it, these guys do all the work and then I just get to comment on it. But you take the third green column there and it shows the increase or decrease in our equalized value. And for the better part of the prior decade, it was virtually flat or decreasing. And a lot of that was actually a decrease in manufacturing tax valuation because the state does that. And they were reducing a set equalized value and in turn assessed value for manufacturing. You can really see it there because it was virtually flat or stagnant for the better part of the, the first half of the decade. But look at the numbers and now Russ is using two point six nine percent on his projections. Well, we went from zero point zero one in 2016 to nearly one percent in seventeen to eight percent and now 10%. So you can see we, we used an average of two point six nine. We've, we've never been anywhere near two point six nine. We either been way low on it or way high on it. Now we're entering, entering a period where we're getting some pretty sizable increases in our equalized value.
Two point six nine, I think was the average before.
Yeah, the average.
Twenty-one through five years back.
Yeah.
So again, for those that are watching at home, I think it's important to understand assessed value is what we have property recorded on the books and what people pay taxes on. Equalized value is a representation of what the true market value of property citywide is. It's at the, in the assessment process, and I'm not the assessor, but we take a look at sales after the fact and we determine what ratio, the actual sales occur to what we have property assessed at. The state wants us between 10%, a plus or minus 10%. Our ratio is getting out of skewed just a little bit. I'll show you that a little bit more on these charts coming up. But the valuation on the market is exceedingly increasing faster and at a faster rate than what we have on our books. I think this next graph really shows it well. Assessed valuation in blue, and you can see how it's going up with net new constructor, with new construction and those type of things. But the true market in the equalized value in the green is, is increasing at least in the last six years, five years, at a faster rate than what our growth is in new buildings, new construction. So when we start talking about 2023 budget, we'll be talking about a process where we have to go through a revaluation. And there's some expenditures associated with that. I think we talked about it a little bit last year when we were doing our 2022 budget. And that's not going away. This is just, you know, there might be some correction, but it's, we got to close that gap. If you look at, at the actual rates themselves, and again, the rate is just levy divided by the value. It's a pure mathematical formula per thousand. So you take the, the whatever levy the city council adopts, divided by the value, that equals your rate. So if you divide it by the assessed value, you'll come up with the assessed rate per thousand or mill rate is what it's referred to. And that blue is what that tax rate has been in the last 10 years. The green is what it could be if you looked at the equalized value growth. So when you do, and you bring the community up to current market standards, you can expect if the spending and the levy stays the same, that your rate will go down.
And for our folks at home who are watching this, you know, you'll hear the county and the school district talk about their tax rate going down. And that's because they use the equalized rate. We use assessed rate because it's based on the formulas there.
The reason why this, the state has equalized rates is, if you just look at the county, for example, county has, what is it, 20 municipalities?
Yeah.
And how many, it's not maybe 20, and then to all the townships. And their assessment ratios between jurisdictions are always different. So like ours might be eighty-eight percent or eighty-two percent. Some communities might be at 90%, some communities may be at 70%. So they, you determine an equalized rate when you're spreading taxes across multiple jurisdiction, like a school district. Part of the Ashkosh School District is actually outside of our boundaries.
Probably about seven different municipalities, easily.
Yeah, and so in order to adjust for those differences, the state says you have to use the equalized portion of that.
So you'll hear them talk about a lower equalized, or a lower rate. It's actually a lower equalized rate. If you take a look at ours, we've had a, our equalized rate's been going down since 2018. But quite honestly, it's just a number. I mean.
Right, because if my property is worth more, maybe I'm paying a lower rate, but I'm paying the same amount in taxes.
Same, it's levy.
The levies, if the levy stays the same and you go through a reevaluation and let's just say a hundred thousand dollar pro, two hundred thousand dollar property comes two hundred and fifty thousand. And the levy stays the same, all it does is drops the rate by that same percentage.
Yeah.
If the spend.
But the property taxpayers still paying the same overall amount.
Yes.
Yeah, that's why we, we tend to focus on the levy and, and the property taxpayers focusing on their tax bill. My tax bill's higher than last year. Unhappy, it's lower than they're happier, but you know, generally we try to focus on the levy.
Believe it or not, there's still some taxpayers that are somewhat confused because they're paying the entire tax bill to the city. But the city is, what are we collecting, sixty percent? I got it on the screen.
Sixty percent from somebody else.
Yeah, 40% and then the school district percentage and the county percentage and the factual tech percentage. Anyways, I digressed a little bit. So getting back to our presentation, that kind of gets us up to date with history and projections. And now comes, the hard part is what's going to happen in 2023. And we know some things are happening on 2023. Most of that is coming on the personnel side of things. So at this point in time, I'm going to take a break in the presentation. I'm going to turn it to Michelle Banky, who's our HR director. And Michelle's going to talk about some of the 2023 personnel assumptions that we're going to start using. going to start using and preparing our budget for 2023.
Thank you, Russ. So first of all, in the assumptions, we of course built in all of the labor agreement, contracted increases into our assumptions. That's already been determined for 2023 because we have contracts through 2023 with all of our unions. We've then factored in discretionary allowance for non-represented employees, which includes potential adjustments from the compensation study that we're currently conducting. We estimate the health insurance could increase as much as 18%. We've continued to have a lot of claims, and I think everyone's seeing increased costs in the health insurance arena. We of course are going to look at potential plan changes that could bring that number down a little bit. And we see a very slight increase in our insurance for dental at about 1.5% for 2023. So now we have shown you this chart for quite a few years as well, and this actually shows us, you know, what our actual cost per employee per year for health insurance has been since 2015.
This the family plan is represented here?
No, this is actual costs if you divide it out by employee.
Total cost divided by employees.
Right, right. So our average cost per year per employee, or per employee per year, as it says up there, was $17,986. We had quite a few years where we were able to reduce costs. However, the, the, well, 2023 will be, the first year, we're going to be above those 2015 costs, basically. So we, we have seen, obviously, we have done much better than trend. Trend here is measured at about 7% per year through our medical insurance decisions. However, we are anticipating increased costs per employee per year for 2023.
And in 2022, we went to self-insurance.
We did.
Funding.
Right. So this year, obviously, we are gathering information for the first year as self-funded. We are watching claims very carefully, but we, you know, we really only have claims for five or six months being self-insured. Everything else, we have to rely on what was reported to us previously from our fully insured plans. So with that, oops, wrong button. So, and this isn't, well.
That's okay, you want me to?
Sure.
Yeah.
This isn't my, my slide.
This isn't your slide? Okay. Yeah, we did this slide. We did this slide last year. So this is what we're looking at for wages. And there's a typo. The first, the header is correct. So it's 2022 wages and benefits, but it's actually 22 wages between general fund and general fund-supported employees and non-general fund-supported employees like utilities and inspections. We also break down the other employee-related expenses based on wages, FICA, WRS, and life insurance. And the total is, for the organization, is $51,650,000. In 2023, and that should be 2023 wages, we see an increase of about 2.8% in total, and that's wages, benefits. There, there was like a slight increase in WRS. FICA was the same this year. But most of this, again, is the wages that we know are being adjusted by the contract settlements, but there's also some step increases for employees that were hired below the minimum and then they're assigned step increases until they get to.
The control point.
Control point, midpoint, whatever.
Midpoint, yes.
It looks like that increase is being driven by the utilities, not the general fund.
Well, that's where I said that.
That's why he's took it over, not Michelle.
That's why, if you look at the difference, the 800,000's coming out of the general fund and general fund-supported, and some of that's getting shifted into utilities because that's where the internal service funds will be, in that far right column, the non-tax-supported, because it's being charged back to the community. So we're, we're doing some accounting, and we're doing some accounting records that provide some support and benefit for expenditure restraint. But it's also, I think, a clear reflection of the actual cost of maintaining our vehicles. So our vehicles through our internal service fund, the maintenance costs will be not only the parts that are purchased for that vehicle and charged to whatever department that vehicle uses, but the labor will be charged to the department that uses it.
So that's why for this slide, the real key number is the bottom lower right, 2.82%. That's still a sizable number because that is assuming no wage adjustments for anybody due to any cost of living, any type of change from the.
Compensation study.
Compensation study. That's if we did nothing. We'd still have 2.82. So when you get something like WRS that's going up, that's, that's contributing quite a bit. It's going from 4.3, $4,361 on WRS to $5,248,000. So 900,000 of the increase is due almost exclusively to WRS. It just gives you an idea what happens with those rates really impact you.
That's what I was wondering, I mean, a 20% increase on WRS. You, you alluded to that it was somewhat minor, but 20% is, is a big number. What's driving retirement increase on that without wages actually increasing?
Yeah, the, the WRS rates are established statewide, and they come out and they do actuarial studies on the retirement fund. And they say they have a rate for general employees, and they have a rate for protective service employees, and there's various adjustments to each of those categories. And some of that is now driven by employee expense, or the employer expense, I'm sorry, and some of it is employee withheld. So when we had Act 10, it was pretty custom for communities to pay the employer and employee share. We no longer pay for both the employer and employee share. Employee share pays for theirs, and theirs going up, just like the employer share is going up. So this is just accounting for that changes. So what I'm, the main thing is this 1.4 at the bottom of the slide is going to come back on another slide because if we do nothing, if we, if we don't do any other adjustments, we're just following the employment contracts for public works, police, fire, it's not public works.
It's transit within public works. They're not within public works, but.
I'm still, sometimes get hung up on some old terminology. But those are all previously agreed to, settled, and approved by council. But WRS, we don't have the choice. It's like the state tells us what that rate's going to be. But the 1.4, 5, 6 is a real number that will come back in the very last slide. So wages, that's kind of a brief overview of wages and benefits. What I wanted to talk about next, we had some discussion at the last council meeting about the debt policy. And I changed that slide, irritating me. I changed the slide to the new goals of 40 and 60, and somehow, when I was redoing some that thing, get carried over. Apologize for that. But the new goal is 40% with a max of 60, and I thought I had changed that. I, I apologize. The blue is our 2023 number, and that represents a 10% increase. And then if we look at borrowing $7.5 million next year in 2023 and $18 million thereafter, and the equalized value grows at the 2.69%, our ratio of our percentage of debt to the state debt limit would go from 50.84% down to 39.22. That's, this is the, the slide that Longings Finance was looking at before they made their recommendation to council. Which one?
The 21, 20 minutes ago, about the change in the levy.
Yeah.
So part of it is due to the unfunded pension liability that we had a debt for.
Okay.
That we took and paid off, which then increased our general obligation debt. So it shifted the, the debt money. And then in 2011, not that this is a big deal, but also contributes, contributes to it, is the TIF funds were moved from enterprise funds into capital project funds. So it came off of.
Okay.
Independent stuff.
There you have it.
That make sense?
Yeah, thank you. Any, any questions on debt projections right now? I know we've kind of talked about this a number of times already. It's better to show pictures than the numbers on this, in a slide presentation. This is the percentage going back to 2014. I guess the big thing is, way back then, we were trying to get below, you know, we had a max of 70. At one point, we were trying to get down to 50. We got 50, we're trying to get down to 40. So that's percent of the debt limit. This one kind of shows you the gap between what we can borrow and how much we can borrow, the red line, versus what we anticipate year-end debt being based on those other projections. So if we continue on this trend, our gap between our maximum and what we'll have as far as actual debt will widen substantially. So going from debt to levy, I, Marco says, why do we have this slide in? Asked me why we have this slide in. I think it's still important to have you understand going into 2023's budget, that when we do levy for taxes, we spread our levy to a number of different sources. The bottom blue is general fund. We have a small amount going to the museum, street lighting. Debt service is the big royal blue number. Green is garbage collection and disposal. The next blue above that is senior services. Library is the kind of rust color. Cemetery is a small band above that. Leach is up there. The water parks there. Rental inspection still has some support at levy. We have our, the light blue is our equipment replacement fund. It's hard to see, but there's relatively no more levy going to the Opera House. I think there was a slight bar in 2020, but '21 and '22 did not have any levy for the Opera House. And then the top one is transit. So I just want you to re-familiarize yourself with the fact that most of our levy goes for operations, but we also separate some of our levy for some of these other functions. Those are all our levy-supported funds, when I say levy-supported funds earlier. So here's the bad news. Our current levy is $43 million, okay? And this is just a doom and gloom picture. The middle section talks about what some of the options could be considered or talked about, and I could always make more assumptions if you wanted to see that. We are still finalizing what our debt service is. That's why it's highlighted. Last year was a 1.57, but I think it's going to be slightly higher because, if you remember, we borrowed more money in 2022 to take on some 2023 projects. So the amount that we're going to need for levy for next year, I'm suspecting that number to be higher, but I'm still working on getting that final number. So as of tonight, I don't have that for you. I told you to remember the 1.456. I call it nondiscretionary because if we do nothing moving forward, that's kind of a fixed increase. Under discretionary, because we're still working on adjustments and you still have some input into it, we have a wage allowance of 1.274. That's to do wage adjustments for the entire range and what is happening with the market conditions in our class and compensation study. So that's just a hold. Our idea would be to present that as a, like contingency appropriation or a contingency amount, not allocate it to any one department. And then we're also working on health insurance increases. We talked about this, up to maybe 18% on the health insurance, depending on if we do some plan design. And again, I'm just telling you what the, what I see as a worst-case scenario right now. At 18%, and, and 1.5 for dental, that's another $1.7 million. That total is 4.78. If you go back up to that middle section, to increase the levy $4,780,000, without going through any other expenditures review or revenue review. Just looking at those major buckets, we're looking at a potential levy of close to 11%. The city manager and this finance director knows that that's probably not a very acceptable increase to you. I guess the point for tonight is to see once, if you have some guidelines as we start preparing budget, if you have some benchmarks that you want to say, you know, we got to keep it to 4%, 2%, nothing. But nothing, to me, is not a very doable option. I think you have to do something, and we're going to be probably obligated to do something, at least for the debt and the commitments we have under employment contracts.
What will be the impact of expenditure restraint, your best estimate?
This year is going to be extremely difficult. Expenditure restraint is based on 60% of the net new construction, and our net new construction is 1.39%. So that's not a whole lot of money. But it's also based on the cost of living through August or September. I won't get that number until the end of September. If I went and did my preliminary review as of the end of July with the CPI that's identified in the expenditure restraint program, the expenditure restraint was close to 10% potential. But then there is also the ability to do other adjustments and, and those type of things. But I'm not anticipating any difficulty in the expenditure restraint. I'm not anticipating any difficulty of meeting and qualifying for the levy limit calculation. In technical terms, the levy limit calculation excludes the debt service levy. It also, we have some carryforward debt service that we haven't maximized in the past. We only maximize the debt service exclusion to the amount necessary to qualify for the expenditure restraint. So in the words of our city manager, we've kept some powder dry, and we do have some ability to take further exclusions under our debt service exclusion process.
I would also point out that we purposely err on the high side on the expenditures at this point. As the deputy mayor pointed out, the, the WRS is based on a model that we put into the system, and sometimes the model projects a higher number. We run with the higher number until the department submit everything. This is based on no department submittals just yet. So we're still waiting on that. But there is, you know, we jokingly say, this is the doom and gloom, you know, workshop to. to brace you for what might happen. I think the number on, you know, debt service may go up slightly because of everything Russ said. The wage and wage benefits, that one of, you know, might go down a little bit because we might be air, might be airing on a little bit on the high side with WRS. But the, the wage allowance, the discretionary one, we want to plug in that 1,274 because based on everything preliminary stuff, we still don't have the, the wage study done. Everybody's getting a wage study done because the market's crazy, so our firm Gallagher, or not Gallagher, excuse me, Cottingham Butler, they're scrambling to try to get that done. So we had to put a number in that we felt was.
Reasonable.
Reasonable, yeah. We'll see as time goes on, but there's a lot of movement that can happen here between now and the end of September, but we wanted to brace you for that. So the model shows 10.89%. If you look at previous years, we've had a higher number than what councils ultimately adopted, so this isn't saying, oh, you got to be ready to do a 10.89. Brace that, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be sizable. I don't like using expenditure restraint as our out because it could be very, compared to other years, expenditure restraint's going to be very generous compared to other years. Generous and ability to pay or willingness to pay are two different things. You ultimately decide what our willingness to pay is because you're, you're representing the, the public. You're going to get, you're going to be the ones getting the calls and the hollering and everything, and we understand that.
How many employees does that discretionary wage allowance spread across?
I would say about 350, 375.
It's all the, the non-union, so you think of police, fire, transit. That's a great point.
For the, the larger question, I said the same thing last year, so this is, I'll be lazy. Just averaging out the last 10 years of increase, 3.859% levy increase, that's where I prefer to be, speaking as 1 of 7.
I was thinking between 2 and 4, so.
If Russ were on the right path.
Yeah, and in the next month, we'll find how close we are to these things, and, you know, we're going to present a balanced budget to you. That's, that's our, that's our responsibility to give you a balanced budget. And based on kind of feedback we get, and we can certainly put this on the September 13th agenda as well, we'll be sort of in the thick of meeting with departments at that time, and we can put this back on to kind of get, I appreciate getting some initial feedback. Some folks want to prefer to take, absorb it in. Some people want to get it out of their system when they go home tonight, be kind to your pets and family, and that's just, that's just my advice to you. But, you know, you obviously, you know, have to absorb that and, and give us input.
Opinion, Matt? Deputy Mayor, excuse me.
I'm not going to stay quiet this evening.
I can sense that.
Um, thank you, thank you for doing that. I know you noticed it. No, I think they're in the, unfortunately, they're in the ballpark of 4-ish. I think there are ways to buy that down, but I know Mark and Russ will, and their teams will come to us with a little more fine-tuned number in a short while, and it'll be closer to our appeasement level. The disappointing thing, it's, it just, it is what it is, but I think it's worth saying is that anywhere from a 4 to 10% increase at this moment, and, and I do not discount the impact that it has on our workforce, that they are due reasonable and proper wages in the workforce, a 4 to 10% increase doesn't mean a change in our operations to the community. We're not increasing our operations to the community. We're not changing any programming or adding anything that they will notice a difference in, and that's, so that it's noted that a, a sizable increase, and yet we're not.
Alleviated.
Our offering is not, is not changing to the, to the citizenry, and, and I'm not saying that as a reason to not do anything, it's just it is what it is. It is the plain language of it.
And I think the message that I would like to share with you is, you know, at, at some point, this is, this is a presentation of maintaining service level and the way we're conducting business today. And maybe there's some ways and things we can still change, but at some point, I think you have to start asking the hard questions is, you know, is this program or service still going to be funded by levy dollars or levy-supported dollars or not? Or do we continue to stay in that business? And we haven't had that difficult discussion the last couple of years about the potential need to revisit what services we're providing and to what level. And you may get to that point where you're going to have to say, we need to really start taking a harder look at X or Y or Z of what we're doing or how we're doing things. And we're always trying to be as efficient as possible. I know that a lot of times in the public's eye, we're not, but I can tell you, being hands-on and being involved with various departments, providing various services, I think they've all doing a very good job of being as efficient as possible. Not saying we can't improve, I think we can, but there might come a point where you have to start asking even harder questions about whether or not things should continue or not. And then those are pleasant.
I can say, you know, and I appreciate you, Samuel, Russ, and Mark, I know you're going to be doing these things. I think Ms. Benke and the employee focus group looking at health insurance, it's a, it's a cross-representation of union, non-union, management, supervisory, and they understand it too, and we have to look at what the market is doing with deductibles and, you know, plan structure and things like that. And so they're going to be looking at some things, and I know Ms. Benke is, you know, having those, those, those are hard discussions because those are things that the employees take home to their families and say, you know, guess what I discussed at work today? And that's, you know, but we know that that's, you know, health insurance is a huge part of it. When we're looking at an 18% increase, you know, we've got to find ways to, to tighten that belt as well, and we will. Well, we did all that in an hour, so I'm not sure.
Efficiency, Russ was right.
Yeah, yeah, we, there's, there's a, with inflation and other things going on, there's a lot of moving targets that I know that Russ and Jennifer have been looking at, and Michelle and Karen in payroll. I mean, there's a lot of people who are looking at this, and that's why even up to now, we are still scrambling to get you numbers because it's like, well, what about this? What about that? We're constantly looking for ways to, to present and, and get a model together to prepare you for this, but we will give you a balanced budget in five, six weeks. You can be assured of. Russ and I may have grayer and lesser hair by then, but we will, we will deliver that, and that's just, that's what we do.
Again, if you do have any other questions, you know, you can forward them to the city manager, or if you, if it's financial related, I'd be more than happy to help you. Questions here we have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That was really the, the purpose of tonight. We sometimes have the audit at this point, but we're doing that one on September 13th at the meeting. There'll be a presentation in meeting, so, but they'll sum it up and everything.
Yep.
We're still a go on there, aren't we?
Yep.
That's probably the most honest answer you got tonight.
We will.
Excellent.
We will.
Otherwise Jennifer will have grayer hair and less hair.
Mayor may not be here on September 13th.
Oh, yes, you will. That's all we have, Madam Mayor.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.